This is the first Tuesday of the month with a PACC City Council meeting.
Evening, everyone. According to John Hart, it is 6:00 PM. I do call this meeting to order. As always, let's begin with the pledge of allegiance. Everybody rise, face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read the open meeting statement for us, the clerks.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you also take roles, Sandy?
Brian Smith?
Here.
Steve Hackett?
Here.
Lori Chestnut?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Alan Keeland?
Here.
Scott Pritchardsky?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Chuck Whitman?
Here.
Gillian Pierce-Peterson? And Eric Olson. Ten present, we have a quorum.
Before I forget, I jumped right over the timetable, but council members do not forget that after our regular council meeting is finished, we are going to go into a closed session, basically, to discuss labor negotiations. So sit still after the meeting is over, and we'll go through that. That will be a closed session. All right, let's go to consent agenda. There are no additions to that unless council member or staff would like to see an item moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, we can go ahead and approve it.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Hackett, second by Keeland, that we approve of the consent agenda as printed. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Regular agenda, we have no new items that are on the agenda tonight, so again, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, and second by Chestnut, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Under announcements and correspondence, we have, number one, we have a certificate of appreciation to Sandy Stibbs for her 15 years of service to the city. She had no choice. She had to come and receive it. So we do have a certificate for Sandy that shows that she has been with us for 15 years. And Sandy, thank you. You've done a wonderful job for us.
It was upside down, Mayor.
On purpose, maybe. Sandy, you want to say a few words?
Not really, just thank you.
Yeah. I know Justin was introduced at our last meeting, but this is Justin Barron's first official meeting as the Director of Public Works, so Justin, welcome tonight. And council members, I know you've all had a chance probably to talk to him, but take it easy on him, at least for the first meeting. Under public input, if there's anybody that's in the audience or council members that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item, please give your name and address, and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Anybody on a non-agenda item? Okay, under unfinished business, we have an ordinance, and this is the second reading, ordinance number 10-15. This is an ordinance, City of Wopacat Traffic Code, Chapter 7.05, Parent 4, Parking Prohibited in Certain Specific Places. And again, I said this is the second reading. If you remember from the last meeting, Roger Hanson was here, and he was explaining that we were just cleaning up over by the middle school and the learning center. They had already not allowed parking there, but we didn't have anything officially on the books, and this will take care of that. I did not hear anybody from the public give their opinion on this. I don't know if you have council members, but again, we'd be looking for an approval of this ordinance, if you would so choose.
Move to approve ordinance number 10-15?
Second.
We have a motion by Keeland, second by Hackett, that we approve of ordinance number 1015. Any discussion? Sandy, you'll color all.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Gillian Peterson? Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Eric Olson? Scott Pritchardsky?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
And Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, a motion carried.
Next, under unfinished business, we have the road closure. The road closure for, on Main Street, for the tailgate party on September 30th, 2015. And this is a holdover, so Henry, go ahead.
Well, probably Brennan and I will tag-team it, but it's on page 90 of our packet. Yeah, we tabled this last meeting, and then Brennan and Roger Hanson and I met to discuss this. And basically, the big change here is from last week, we, last meeting, we actually had the closure proposed for the south part of the intersection of West Session. The idea was to put the band and everything in that intersection, so we've moved away from that. And we're going to have all the activities in the area that's highlighted. This is a family event, so it's no alcohol. We're hoping to have some tailgaters banned. And then, the plan is just to use the sidewalks, and those that want to walk will walk to South Park. We hope to have some tubas, maybe some drums, leading a procession down to the park. And then, the groups will assemble up there, and then the bonfire will be down at the beach. The closure specifically for up here on North Main is from noon to 7:00 PM. There isn't a lot of parking along the fireside, and we just think we're not going to need as much time to clear out cars. And frankly, if we have three or four or half a dozen cars in there, it's probably not a big deal. People can park around them, and, you know, Tim, we won't necessarily need to pull them out of there, I don't think. So I don't believe it'll require anything of your department in that area. But we, this is the second event of the year. We had some pretty good success. I think last Thursday, I saw a couple aldermen attend, and hopefully, this will generate some interest as well. The planning committee's going to pivot in their meeting on Thursday to start talking about this in a little more detail. So, if you have any questions?
Maybe one question, Henry, about the parade, or whatever you want to call it, the walk to South Park or the bonfire? Just using the sidewalks?
Yeah, and I would probably want to talk, I would want to talk with the chief, but I'm thinking we probably want some spotters, just have the spotters to maybe be at the intersections.
I also asked about the return.
Right.
If they're walking, they're going to walk back.
Well, I think at that point, it disperses, and I'm thinking a lot of people are going to drive down to South Park versus walking, is my guess. Now, the younger people might walk down there, or at least we're hoping some do. So, that's basically the closure request. Now, did I miss anything, Brennan?
Okay, so as you can see from the map on page 90, there is no intersection that is being closed off. It's just the Main Street between Session and Granite Street.
And we'll let, make sure the property owners along that stretch, you know, will know that the closure's coming up, so they're aware.
Any questions? If not, we're looking for a motion to approve.
I'll second.
A motion by Mayo, second by Dave Peterson, that we grant the request to close North Main Street between the intersections of Session Street and Granite Street. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Good luck, you guys.
Thank you.
Next, we have new business, job description change for the Assistant Children's Librarian. Peg?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Well, this came about because we started to look at our job descriptions based on the new job description review that's being, taking place with the other departments. And one of the questionnaires addressed whether an individual employee should be regarded as exempt or non-exempt status. And I did look at the Fair Labor Standard Act to gather some of this information. And the salary level test, the position passed that one, they have to make, if they're paid less than $23,600 per year, they would be considered non-exempt. And then, also, if an employee was guaranteed a minimum amount of pay for any work performed, so 40 hours a week, even if they worked 38, they would be paid for the 40 that passed. But when we started to look at the duties of the position, we recognized that this individual would not be supervising two or more full-time employees on a regular basis. They might supervise a part-time employee during an evening or Saturday, or have supervision of volunteers. But, so it didn't really pass that, and has management as a primary duty of the position. This position isn't really management. At times, this individual would take over for the assistant, for the youth librarian, when that position would be absent. But otherwise, it really doesn't, that isn't part of the regular duty. And then the last part, has genuine input of status of employees, so is involved in the hiring and firing of individuals who work for us. And that one also did not pass. So we are recommending to the council, and the library board has approved a status for this position that is non-exempt.
Okay, so you heard Peg's recommendation from the library board, and since this is personnel, Henry, this is why it's in front of the council?
Yeah, I think it's just been standard practice for us to approve the job descriptions as they change. I mean, non-exempt is basically hourly, to put it in terms we all understand, so, yep.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve this job description change.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Chestnut, that we approve of the changing of the job description for the Assistant Children's Librarian from a salaried position to a non-exempt position. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Next, we have, we have Parks and Recreation Fee Changes for 2016. Aaron?
Mayor, thank you, first of all. Do you mind if I speak about this item and the next one kind of as one, as they're together?
Sure.
And then, I think they're listed separately, in case they need separate votes.
It looks like we are going to have to do separate votes, but yeah, go ahead.
Sounds good. With that in mind, if you guys want to refer to your memo on page 96 of your packet, most of the information about ActiveNet is in there. I will go through a little bit of it to give you an overview. This is something we've brought to Park Board now two meetings. There were some suggestions to bring some information back. I think most of that information is right here in that memo. But ActiveNet is a recreation software management service that we've been looking at for a few months now. We've been looking at other recreation software management services for over a year, and really haven't found any to be affordable, or couldn't find a way to pay for them upfront, or possibly the annual fee that would cost in support. The cheaper ones that we have seen weren't able to do all the things that we wanted, and really, we didn't feel like they were going to help us in the long run anyways. So ActiveNet is one of two that we felt did the duties that really, what we're looking for in the department, and the other one was RecDesk. And when we talked to some of our other people in our associations, it's about split, half have ActiveNet, half have RecDesk. RecDesk, if they got a recreation software system in like the 2000 to the 2006 time period, it seemed like more went with RecDesk at that point. The newer systems have gone to ActiveNet. I've listed a few towns there around the area that have ActiveNet. I primarily spoke with New London on how everything works, as they're a pretty similar size. They do a lot of similar programming. And asked if it was a success or not. They got it about three or four years ago. Within two years of having it, their online registrations jumped, or basically took care of all of their youth programs. So they had 1,600 registrations over the counter the year prior, and within two years, that jumped to, the online registrations was at about 1,500 or a little over. That kind of spoke to the utilization of ActiveNet. Some of the things that it's going to do for us is mainly staff efficiency. We spend tons of time, and when I say we, Tamra Jen at the front desk, data inputting everything into a program that was created by Tamra out of Microsoft Access. And Tamra's done a great job at creating this program, and it spits out reports for us that we need to send to all of the youth boards that we work with. And it definitely does what we need. The problem is, is if something were to happen to Tamra, if she decided to take another job, if, God forbid, something happened to her, we would not have the expertise that she does, because she kind of built this program. One of the things with this is obviously, there's support, ongoing support through ActiveNet. And that would be a more comfortable feeling for our department. The other thing is that the data input time that they spend, a lot of times, we have to have both of them in, especially at high registration times, where they're both in for a couple days just to make sure that everything's in the system, so we can get the information to our associations that we need to do. In our strategic plan, we've mentioned that we might, we would be looking in the next five years at possibly having a full-time administrative assistant with a part-time to assist, especially during those busy times. I feel like this could take enough work away, or enough time, to where we may not be, we would not be asking for that in the next five years. So that is one of the positives. Facility reservations, this is mainly for the ease of use for all of our users, whether it be the rec center, parks, anything, tennis courts. They could actually zoom in on a map and see what's open, what's not, and they can do it real time. Everything is updated. Scheduling is real time, so as soon as, Mayor, if you schedule Brainerd's Bridge, or gym, the Augie Austin Gym, Henry could go on five minutes later and see that that was booked. If you decided to cancel it, Henry could go on five minutes after that and see that it opened up. That's something we don't have currently. Another thing we spent a lot of time on is rescheduling, communication between umpires, between coaches, and our Babe Ruth leagues, and things like that. That won't completely stop. This can, we can centralize everything here, where there's automatic emails that go out to, whether it be our contract employees, our umpires, or our coaches, or what, that would take time out of Andrew's, mainly Andrew's job, and free up time for him to work on other stuff as well. Another point is membership. We have senior center memberships. This can track all of those. It also can act as a check-in system. We've been working with a system called Kid Check, just recently here, to track all of our youth users on weekends, Fridays, and Saturday nights. This can generate reports to show how much staff do we need on these nights, what are the slower times of year. We can be more efficient that way, rather than estimating how many users we have walking through the door at any given time or any given month. Those are kind of the highlights that this would provide. Obviously, there's a cost to all of these systems, and I tried to put that in your memo here. We had two proposals through ActiveNet. One was an upfront training cost of $21,500. This would have, if we went with proposal one, this would come from donation money, and Friends of the Park money. My thought is that $21,500 is a lot of money out of donation and fundraising money, and that could possibly be used for other projects, such as Lakewood Field Concessions and Bathrooms. Maybe we could go towards that in the near future, or something that really needs to be taken care of in our parks. With that proposal one, there was a 5.5% charge that would be placed on every transaction, and accompanying that would be a $3,050 hardware cost. Proposal two is zero dollars down for training and implementation, and a 6.5% fee, so that's a one percentage point higher than the proposal one. And then that sheds that $21,500 cost. It still has a $3,050 hardware cost. That $3,050 is if we go directly through ActiveNet. I've talked with Josh, and Josh Werner has been involved in this process as well. He feels like we can get some of that hardware for cheaper than that. Now, that would be something that I would probably take out of some of our donation money, or it might be a combination of donation and operational dollars. I don't have enough operational dollars to get the $3,050, but with donation money, I feel like we can handle that. With this would have to be a change in fees. We have not, since I've been here, in 2011, we've not increased fees, and it's not something that we like to do, but we haven't done it in four years. When you look at other recreation departments that we talked to, they, some of them do it every year, some of them do it biannually. Not saying that's something we're looking to do, but they have been flat since 2011. Some of them have actually gone down, in the case of swimming lessons this last year, went from $30 to $20. We've also provided a number of free events for the community in that time period. Those are listed on there, but intergenerational Halloween Bash, Fallarama, Winter RecFest, Trivia Night, Movies in the Park. So those are other things that are being offered to the community. It's not only us that's, as staff and the city, that's going to be benefiting from this software, it's also the users. So, for example, we use Point and Pay right now. There's a $1.50 charge for a youth program on Point and Pay, if you do that online. This would just be an extra $1.50 for that particular thing. If you look at your pricing structure there, this is kind of how we proposed to do it. That would be on page 95 before the memo. And if you can see, we would have total new expenses from the 6.5%, over all our revenues would total about $13,580 in the course of a year. We're going off of 2014 revenue. All of the proposed fee changes are on your right. Cost recovered is on your far right, and that would basically just even that out. $13,752 is what we would recover if those fee changes were accepted. We obviously had to go to some of our larger number things, youth programs. We weren't going to make up any money in our men's volleyball league, or not much, because we don't have many teams. Youth programs was a big one. Parks was a big one. Also, seniors was a big one. And you can see the changes on there. Some of the changes we made, we felt like we were able to raise some of them higher than the 6.5% because they were low compared to comparative towns. And there was a high demand for them, so parks were always full in our parks. And we don't have any problem renting them throughout the summer. We also have many comments, actually, saying how cheap it is to rent a park for a day. So that, we raised a little higher in this proposal than the standard 6.5%. And then others, we might not have raised because we felt like they were high comparatively. So that's kind of what you're looking at there. I'm sure you guys had a chance to review this. Are there any questions about the proposed fees for 2016 to cover this cost, or ActiveNet in general?
Steve, go ahead.
I called Aaron earlier today, so he was ready. The membership for the senior center, the residents are paying $10, and he wants to raise it to 15. Non are 15, and he wants to raise it to 20. And my opposition to this is only because the residents of the City of Wopacat already pay this money in their taxes. They shouldn't be charged other than what they're paying in their taxes. The non-residents, I can see giving them a raise, but they don't pay any taxes towards this. And so the residents are actually paying twice, or who knows how much, I don't even know.
So, yeah, let me mention a couple things on that. Number one is, if there was no change in the resident fee structure, the non-resident fee to cover that $3,010 of the recovered costs, there would have to go to about an $11 increase, which would bring theirs to $26 rather than 20. And then, that would allow for the resident to stay at $10. When we go through and review fees across the state and across this area, especially for senior centers, it is like comparing apples to oranges. There is really no setway that is a norm. The Wisconsin Association for Senior Centers set out a survey in 2012, I believe it was, and gathered all this information on what are fees, how do you collect money, how do you keep your senior centers going? And there really wasn't a pattern. Some have zero fees for members and non-members, but they ask for mandatory donations through friends groups that support the senior center. Some have resident fees very similar to our current ones. Some have resident fees that are $50 and $70 for residents and non-residents. The ones that don't have resident fees, a lot of times, they make them pay every time they come through the door, possibly, or for certain activities, or classes, or exercise classes. So, to say there's a right or a wrong way to do it, you know, I guess, it depends on the community and what they expect. You know, I guess, you know, a council, it's a council decision on what you expect, and who you expect to pay for it, and how we expect to support it. The one thing I didn't want to do is get into where we're, you know, collecting dollars every time someone walks in the door. That didn't seem like a very efficient process to me. I've talked to people that do do that. They wish they didn't. Is this the right amount? It was something that we felt comfortable with when we were going through this, but, like I said, that would be a decision for council to make. If there was some reworking that needed to be done in this proposal, obviously, you could table it, and we could work on it, and bring it back at a different time. But hopefully, that, we can, you know, hopefully, that answers some of your questions, Steve.
Anybody else have any questions? Aaron, let me get this right. So if you have, let's start with, talk about the youth. So if you have a youth that is in softball, or youth baseball, and they're now paying, if they're a resident, they're paying $35.
Correct.
And now you're proposing that they're going to pay $38?
Right.
Plus, they're going to have to pay 6.5% if they do it online?
Nope. 6.5% is included in that $38.
Okay.
So that's their flat fee.
So they're just going to pay an additional $3 more than what they?
Currently do.
Currently do.
Correct. There also is, there wouldn't be a discount for coming over the counter. We absolutely would take any over-the-counter registrations, but the idea is to encourage the online use. So all this, and really, it would only be a percentage discount anyway, because there's a 5.5% on everything. So really, we, most communities just say, we're going to go through, and everything is going up this much, rather than give the discount for over the counter.
And the $38 for some parents for the youth is, could be expensive, but you do have a program in place for the children that?
We will always and always have worked with, worked with families that don't feel comfortable paying a certain amount. We don't want youth to not be involved in programs because of the paying a certain amount. We don't want youth to not be involved in programs because of that. Even though we have worked with them, we, in the last year here, actually, this summer, Walice for Kids has donated a thousand dollars for scholarships to cover that cost. So, yeah, there's, there's opportunities, if, if people can afford that, that we, we will work with them to get them in a program.
And, Henry, and maybe Kathy, this is more of a technical question. This, this is not a new fee, so we don't have to worry about the state.
We don't have to worry, because it has nothing to do with public safety, stormwater, or public works fees. So, Park and Rec, we can raise the fees without an impact to the levy.
Okay.
I am a little bit confused about the training implementation fee. Really, what you're talking about is a way of funding it, isn't that correct? We still have to pay the implementation fee, don't we?
We do not, not if we go with the second proposal. There is no implementation fee.
I, I don't understand how that's different. The extra one percent goes for paying that fee then, or what?
Yeah, so they, so ActiveNet, I guess the best way to explain this is if, if we went with the first proposal, they would collect five point five percent on every transaction fee, which would amount to a little over eleven thousand dollars per year. So, they're getting that extra two thousand dollars per year, every year, technically.
Okay, so it's a funding mechanism, is what it is. All right, I understand.
Anybody else? Have any questions? For somebody that's been over there trying to sign up their, their children, and I know they do a great job over there, but two people, and sometimes four people sitting at that desk are not enough to get it done. So, I applaud you, Aaron, for trying to, to find a way to fund this, and also to make life a lot easier for parents and adults as they sign up for these programs. So, I, I, you know, although nobody likes to see increases, I think this is a minimal amount, and it's basically comes down to the people that are using it are the ones that are paying for it, and that's kinda the way we're, our system is going towards. Any other questions? What we would like to do is, first of all, I, I think it should be in this order too, if you're okay with this, make a motion to approve the increase in fees to all of the events that, programs that Aaron has listed. And then after that, then you could look at making a motion to the ActiveNet software.
But if we don't approve the ActiveNet, there's no reason to increase the fees.
But if we approve the ActiveNet and not approve the fees, how are we gonna pay for it? So, does it really matter?
Chicken and egg, yeah, either way.
Okay, just to appease, Alan, I agree with Alan. Let's do the ActiveNet first, and then we'll do the fees second. Tell us that, if you'd like to.
Mayor, I'd move to approve, I would move that we approve the acquisition of the ActiveNet software.
Okay, we have a motion by mail, second by Olson, that we approve the purchase of the ActiveNet software. And we're talking about doing proposal number two, which would be a six point five percent charge, and then approximately three thousand, fifty dollars for the hardware cost, which would be a one-time fee. Any further discussion? Samuel, color roll.
Jillian Peterson. Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
And Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay, so if you do so choose to use this as a funding mechanism, then we would need to increase the cost of the programs that Aaron has listed in his, in the packet.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Dave Peterson, that we approve of the fee changes, increases to the programs listed in the packet. Any discussion? Samuel, color roll.
Steve Hackett.
No.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson. Eric Olson. Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
And Chuck Whitman.
No.
Eight ayes, two noes, motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Aaron. Let's move on, then. We have a license report number twelve eighty-seven. This is to change the agent for the Pizza Hut, just the, is it, the individual is, is being changed. Okay, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Chestnut, that we approve of the license port number twelve eighty-seven, which is changing the agent at Pizza Hut to Michael Byersdorf. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. We have license report number twelve eighty-eight, which is on page one-ten. There are five individuals on there. As always, if you make this motion, this is pending background checks and payment of any fines owed to the city.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Keeland, that we approve of license port number twelve eighty-eight. This is an operator's license. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. No number ten tonight, issues in project discussion, communications, recommendations of the mayor. Again, just reminder that we are gonna caucus briefly after this council meeting's over, and Chief, I guess, we'd ask you to stay. Henry, anybody else? That would be good, okay. Council members, you have to stay, though. Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Keeland.
Second.
Second by Hagan, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled council meeting, which is on Tuesday, September fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at six P.M., subject to call. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. We're adjourned at six thirty-eight P.M. Thanks, everybody, for attending and watching tonight.